Hey, good morning. Today is Tuesday, March twenty-sixth. It's nine AM. There's a regular meeting of the Kings County Board of Supervisors. Supervisors. Madam Clerk, please call roll.
Joe Nevs.
Here.
Richard Valley.
Here.
Doug Verboon.
Here.
Rusty Robinson.
Here.
Richard Fagundes.
Here.
Okay, five members of the President. We're ready to conduct business today. So at this time, we'll invite Pastor Tim Deacon from Grace Bible Church. Good morning. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's all stand together as we take a moment to thank the one who made it possible for us to be here today. I'm gonna read from Psalm one sixteen and then I'll pray. Psalm one sixteen says, "I love the Lord because he has heard my voice and my pleas for mercy, because he inclined his ear to me. Therefore, I will call on him as long as I live. The snares of death encompassed me; the pangs of shawl laid hold on me. I suffered distress and anguish. Then I called on the name of the Lord. O Lord, I pray, deliver my soul. gracious is the Lord, and righteous our God is merciful. The Lord preserves the simple. When I was brought low, he saved me. Return, oh my soul, to your rest, for the Lord has dealt bountifully with you, for you have delivered my soul from death, my eyes from tears, my feet from stumbling. I will walk before the Lord in the land of the living. I believed, even when I spoke. I am greatly afflicted. I said in my alarm, 'Oh mankind, are liars. What shall I render to the Lord, for all his benefits to me? I will lift up the cup of salvation and call on the name of the Lord. I will pay my vows to the Lord in the presence of all his people. Precious in the sight of the Lord is the death of his saints. O Lord, I am your servant. I am your servant, the son of your maidservant. You have loosed my bonds. I will offer to you the sacrifice of thanksgiving and call on the name of the Lord. I will pay my vows to the Lord in the presence of all his people, in the courts of the house of the Lord, in your midst, oh Jerusalem. Praise the Lord.'" Let's pray together. Father God, this is a special week for those who celebrate the Holy Week, the Ashen Week, as some call it. Just on Sunday, we were remembering how great it was so many thousand years ago when the great Shepherd Jesus Christ came into Jerusalem during the triumphal entry. He came as a humble leader, not on a horse, not high and mighty, but low and humbly, seated on the colt of a donkey. The people recognized him. They placed palm branches before him to praise him. And I personally, God, just want to thank you for your word and for the amazing historical account it gives us of what took place on that day. Now, as we have this week, we want to just remember and reflect on what took place. The Last Supper occurring on Thursday night, Friday, the day that Christ was crucified, and then three days later, he was raised from the dead on that glorious resurrection Sunday. I pray, God, that you would help us to keep these things in mind this special week. I also want to pray, God, for those who are here today. Thank you that we all had good enough health to come, and for those who couldn't make it, I pray for their health to be restored. We pray for the leaders who are here representing their districts, in particular, here in Kings County. We all want what, we want to see blessing in this place. We want to see success and monetary, as well as physical, as well as emotional, as well as spiritual. And I pray that you would give these people the wisdom that is needed in these difficult times. There is so many different things to discern, and I pray you'd give them great wisdom as they seek to lead the people in a way that will lead them to success. I praise things in the name of our great Savior, Jesus Christ. Amen.
You can call me if you...
Pledge of allegiance to our flag. Ready? Salute. The pledge of allegiance by the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, without borders, with liberty and justice.
Okay, at this point, we'll go to unscheduled appearances. Any person may direct the board, directly address the board on any item on the agenda or any other items of interest to the public. That is, within the subject jurisdiction of the board. Two minutes are allowed. If we have anybody that has a speaker card?
I have no written correspondence. Our first speaker is Red Vidiassi.
Good morning.
Good morning. Hello, my name is Red, and I am a student at Hanford High. I love to be involved with my community, so it saddens me that I cannot be more involved with the Board of Supervisors meetings. As you know, these meetings are at nine AM every Tuesday, and while this Tuesday, I'm on spring break, so I can attend every other Tuesday, I'm in school, and I can't. I would like to suggest having a later meeting once a month at six PM, so that I could still do my extracurriculars and so that people who work till five can make it. I was also hoping that you would consider moving public comment to the end of the agenda. That way, people could participate more in the decisions made in our community. I looked over the agenda, and there were a couple things that I wanted to say. First, there's a proposal for a Veteran and Military Women's History Week that will be for this week in the future, and I think that that's a fantastic idea to support and acknowledge the women who are in our Veteran, who are veterans and who were in our military in the past. And also, there is, the firefighters are asking for a new piece of, a new apparatus, and I think it's a fantastic idea to give them the tools they need to help protect us. I also think that it is wrong that the firefighters have been out of contract for two hundred and seventy-one days since July first of two thousand and twenty-three. Twenty-three firefighters have left to go to different counties for better pay, better benefits, and I think that our firefighters deserve the best since they protect us. There was an incident across the street from my school during lunch, and while I was walking to the store, firefighter truck came, and then like three minutes later, when I was walking out, there was a police car and an ambulance that were following along. So firefighters get there, they're super kind, they do the best, and I think they deserve our support. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Trent James.
Morning, Trent.
First of all, good morning, Chairman and members of the board. My name is Trent James. I'm the Deputy Sheriff's Association President. So as many of you know, we've been out of contract since June of last year. Since then, we've had multiple meetings with the county, pretty much reaching in lock in most of those. There's also was a countywide salary survey conducted that compared us to thirteen other agencies. Of those thirteen other agencies, the Kings County Sheriff's Department came in last, if not close to it, in every single one of the major categories regarding total base compensation, benefits, and even incentives. We initially reached impasse first in November, before the salary survey was completed. We again reached impasse this February after the completion of the salary survey. I stand with the DSA members here. We are united and pretty much hopeful in reaching an agreement that was beneficial for both sides and the citizens of Kings County. We want to retain and recruit the best possible candidates for this job and for this community. With that, I'll hand it off to my Vice President, Jonathan Brewster.
Next speaker is Jonathan Brewster.
Morning, John.
Morning, Chairman. Chairman, Member of the Boards, my name is Jonathan Brewster. I'm the Vice President of the Deputy Sheriff's Association, and I am the lead negotiator on our negotiations team. I have some prepared notes here. I probably will go over my two minutes, but, oh, there you go, turn the lights off. Already shutting me down, huh?
That's one of your guys.
Yeah, I know. I know. We'll handle that later. Don't worry. Today, I'm here representing over ninety law enforcement professionals, which in the course of their employment with the county, they carry the following duties: patrol deputies, SWAT operators, crisis resolution team negotiators, water rescue specialists, detectives, narcotic investigators, gang investigators, civil deputies, school resource deputies, day investigators, and much more. Some of these personnel are assigned to multiple units I just named off. All of these professionals, also at times, are asked to go above and beyond, pushed to the limits, whether it's applying a tourniquet to a down motorcycle rider, CPR on an infant or someone's loved one as the family watches and hopes that the deputy on scene can save their loved one's life, or at least give them a fighting chance to make it to the hospital. Members of this association and others within the county risk their lives daily. Your DSA members try their best to serve the community and uphold the oath they took on their very first day of service. Amidst all the controversy, horrible legislation and laws we don't always agree with, we still come to work and serve our community and county every day. Even with the scrutiny across the country against law enforcement, your DSA remains proactive, seeking to catch thieves, drug dealers, and other offenders. Sometimes they run, sometimes they fight, sometimes they flee in vehicles. Also, some members will face the situation of their life and career and be forced to save themselves or someone else they don't even know from death or grave bodily injury, and be forced to discharge their duty weapon and make that decision in a matter of seconds. This very scenario has played out several times throughout my career in ten years. One that is very close to me happened this summer. DSA members this past summer were involved in a pursuit, and then a deputy involved shooting in a matter of an hour and a half on a Saturday night in Kings County. Members of this DSA work hand in hand with other first responders in this county, such as the firefighters, Detentions Deputy Association, probation officers, parole agents. Back in the summer, again, I worked weekend nights for nine years. Firefighters were dispatched to a large structure fire in Stratford. Two structures were lost that night. Staffing is what it is, but your deputies and firefighters work together, and I wish we had body cam, but me and three other guys were pulling hoes, helping the firefighters trying to put out that fire. We had people screaming, there's people in the house, we dropped the hoses, went into lifesaving measures, and we got everybody out, but that time was used, and the fire spread to the second structure. That's just another scenario of what we do. Out in the county, it's just us. We don't have Hanford PD, Lamoore PD, sometimes CHP, but the only time we really get help is when we have to yell for it. Oftentimes, we're the first ones requested to go and help the other local agencies because we have the resources readily available. We will do this even when we are running three beats and a supervisor to cover thirteen hundred square miles. The supervisors try to accommodate everyone's schedules and lives. Everyone has a life outside of work, and the management of the sheriff's office is very supportive of supervisors taking care of their people and making them put their family first. This is the culture you have at the sheriff's office, and we're trying to keep that culture. We have people that will leave for more money, and they will come back, and they will take the pay cut, because that's the culture we have. When Sheriff Robinson swears in a new deputy, whether it's an operations deputy that's a part of the DSA or a detention deputy that's part of the DDA, he tells us all to have an outlet from this line of work. It's very easy to have this career field consume your life because of the demands mentally, emotionally, and physically. On top of balancing work, you're trying to balance a family, and on top of that balance, you're trying to balance a checkbook or a bank account, because the new kids probably don't know what a checkbook is. As of today, we have deputies being aggressively recruited by other agencies that pay more. They offer more incentives, and they value the specialties they are a part of. Yes, we signed up for this job, and I'm ninety-nine percent sure everyone here at the DSA loves their job, but why stay here when you can go less than a mile down the road and make so much more? A topped-out six-sleeve officer with longevity pay who works down the street with our current contract, the way it stands, makes more than our sergeant who flies the airplane and will be flying the helicopter soon. If he was to leave, who flies him? Transparency is demanded from law enforcement, and we are held to the highest of standards. However, here at Kings County, when negotiating, there's no negotiating. Both offers have been presented, and there has been little to no compromise. Negotiating is a dreadful process here. I talk with other associations, and ours is nowhere near the norm. It's literally a standoff anything and everything. Take it or leave it. It's a year and an out-of-date salary survey that costs six hundred and forty-six thousand dollars. We understand it was a countywide salary survey and a classification study, but we got twenty-twenty-two and twenty-twenty-one numbers. Some of them are up to date, and one single page of a study to show where Coffin Associates thinks we should be. For us guys that understand this, to me, that's like us trying to buy a twenty-twenty-two pickup at twenty-twenty-four prices. When the DSA asked to see what information and figures were used to make the calculations for the benefits on the salary survey, we were told the benefit sheets were proprietary information, and it cannot be released to us. The county told us that they couldn't even get it for themselves. How is that even possible, or how is that even legal? Public funds were used to purchase that survey, and the work of Coffin and Associates was funded by public funds. Why isn't the DSA allowed to have that sheet to vet the survey? We are investigators. We investigate for a living with zero facts. You just want us to sign a contract for a multi-year deal when we have supporting facts and documents that favor our position? This is a big deal to us. It's our livelihoods we are fighting for. The DSA invested its own money for just over five thousand. In ten business days, we had a comprehensive thirty-eight-page classification study done for ourselves through our association's lawyer. All we're asking for is a fair shake. We're not asking to be the top-paid law enforcement agency in the state, valley, or the county. We're asking for the median with incentives. There's no reason why a sergeant for the sheriff's office should be making what a six-sleeve does at Hanford PD. We can do better. For a lot of us, this is home. We love our county, we love our jobs, we love our department. Please help us and make it easy for us to turn down job offers from other agencies. The applicant pool coming out of the academy is not great. I'm in admin right now, and seven out of like almost forty cadets are affiliated already at the academy currently. We rarely see lateral applications because we don't have much to offer besides base salary pay and longevity pay. I will leave you with this. Depending on this contract, it will make a decision for many more whether they stay or go. If this multi-year deal, if this is a multi-year deal, it will be the last one under Sheriff Robinson, and the future is unpredictable and uncertain. So please take this into consideration for your next closed session. Follow the process that's in place for impasse so we can get to an agreement, and it's fair for us, the county, and the citizens of Kings County. Thank you.
That's all the speaker cards that I have, and no one online appears to have their hand raised.
Anybody in the audience have anything to say? Carolyn?
Good morning, Chairman, Members of the Board, Carolyn Lees, Human Resources. I do want to let you guys know that we did meet with the DSA yesterday, and that they have requested mediation, and it is a discussion we'll have with the board during closed session today.
Thank you. All right. Comment from the board would be, we don't really comment on issues like this, but I can tell you right now that your work does not go unnoticed, and we'll continue to discuss this with our staff and our board, and we'll get back to you shortly. But thank you. We do appreciate what you guys do, and we also appreciate the fire union as well. So, thank you for coming. Okay, we'll go to, if there's no more comments, nobody online, right?
Correct.
Okay, we'll go ahead and go to approval of the minutes. Item A, report out of closed session from the regular meeting, March nineteenth, twenty-twenty-four.
There's nothing to report.
Item B, approval of the minutes from the regular meeting, March nineteenth, twenty-twenty-four. Moved by Fagundes, second by Robinson. Madam Clerk, please call roll.
Joe Nevs.
Yes.
Richard Valley.
Hi.
Doug Verboon.
Yes.
Rusty Robinson.
Yes.
Richard Fagundes.
Okay, we'll move on now to the config counter. Item on the config counter can be listed as one motion, or items can be pulled if so desired. Moved by Supervisor Robinson, second by Supervisor Fagundes. Madam Clerk, please call roll.
Joe Nevs.
Yes.
Richard Valley.
Hi.
Doug Verboon.
Yes.
Rusty Robinson.
Yes.
Richard Fagundes.
Yes. Okay, I have a favor. Up next, we have regular counter items, and if we have Fire Department, we have South Row Florries. Morning, Chief.
Good morning, our board, Chairman, Members of the public. We stand here before you to present the request for approval to finalize the purchase of a new hundred-and-five-foot ladder meant to be housed at our station number nine. That being said, this is something decided motion by previous administration. My understanding is the strategically placed ladder truck is for progress improvement of the area and for forward progress development in the area to promote a better response for the, for the citizens in the community. That being said, from after reviewing the documents, there is no general, in fact, immediate to the general fund. It's coming out of a pass-through, COES, and the CDBG funding portion of it. However, the developer, as many of us know, there's six hundred-plus days away from the delivery of the apparatus. That's just the norm nowadays with everything being so, so tight on materials. With that being said, we stand here before you to answer any questions and to discuss, as I see.
Okay, thank you. Any question?
Ms. Chairman. Okay. Yeah, for Steph, what year was the CDBG funding awarded? What, what fiscal year is this grant from?
Alex Hernandez, Deputy Director of Planning. So originally, this was a twenty-nineteen grant, however, it did not get funded until twenty-twenty-two.
Okay.
So we came to your board in twenty-twenty-three to revise the resolution for the funding. It's roughly one point seven five million dollars.
Is this gonna make?
By twenty-twenty-six.
Yeah.
Maybe.
I don't remember any recent CDBG funds being used, so that makes sense. I know that we've received some state money over the years in buying a number of trucks. Is this gonna make two ladder trucks for the county?
So the CDBG fund will only be funding one?
Yeah, but it's gonna make a total of two trucks, because the other truck was purchased by the Tachi Truck, right? Okay. And how, and how come now a need for two trucks? After all those years, we just had one ladder truck?
No, that's a terrific question. Thank you for asking.
Yeah, thank you.
So the ladder truck that we have at Station Four is our eastern most station. And as far as response to the area, the fact that we have such a commercial element in Kettleman City and also the expected Jackson Ranch project, as well as its proximity to the city of Avonale, this just ups our game in ways that we couldn't even quite, having an aerial stream in those, in those locations really, really helps us out as far as operations is concerned. It's a great location to have a ladder truck at.
No doubt. The Jackson Development, is there gonna be a building there taller than the Hotel Casino?
I'm not sure about the height of them, but I know that those facilities are usually, as far as the, you know, square footage of those things, elevated streams are the only way to be able to get fire or suppression on those areas. So I'm not quite sure what the, what the overall heights are going to be, but I know square footage is just gonna be amazing. So.
Okay. Chief, I know, I know you're new, and, but just, just in fairness, just want to let you know, community development block grant funds for fire trucks, I'm not a fan of that. There's other ways to get money. And so this, this is probably what I said in twenty-nineteen, that one point seven five community development block grant, that's money that can go to curb gutter and sidewalks, park renewals in Armona, Stratford, Kettleman City, that's still lacking some pieces of curb gutter and sidewalk. So the former chief started that community development block grant, going after those grants right there. That is limited resources for the rural communities. So I know you're new, please, you know, keep that in mind when you're looking on the, on the replacement of the funds. And I say that from a very sixteen-year-long, strong record of support for Kings County firefighters, and they know that. But this is something that I've always said, so just first to you, I just want to give you a heads up.
Will do.
Thank you, Chief.
If I could add a comment to the second fire truck, we had a big fire out in the rural area in Kings County, and our fire truck went down, ladder truck went down. It was a single-story structure, a two-story structure, but it was so big and so hot, they had to get up in the middle of it, so they had to wait until the more volunteer fire department showed up with their ladder truck to get up and down into the fire and put it out. So it is needed in a rural.
Absolutely. Many people understand that ladder trucks are meant for tall buildings. However, ladder trucks are also used for large square footage and areas that are inaccessible for our firefighters. Instead of placing them in a harm's way, we use ladder trucks to gain advantage and to be able to tackle those fires without risking to any of our staff.
Yeah, the fire was burning inside out, and they couldn't get from outside in, so they had to go up on top and get it stopped, so.
Supervisor Valley, I did just want to know, with the same grant, we also received curb gutter sidewalk money?
Yes, sir.
And then Public Works came that, brought that to you a few weeks ago.
A few weeks ago, yeah, for the stretch of Petroleum Avenue.
Correct.
See, if we'd have got the one point seven five, though, we'd been talking streets instead of three blocks. But that's okay.
The difficulty with that is they have to be shovel-ready projects.
I get it.
So it was planned out already.
I understand. I understand. I just give the chief a heads up.
Lieutenant Robinson.
Questions to the, to the older vehicles. Are we retaining the older fire trucks? Do we sell them, donate them? What do we do with those?
So for this, we're not replacing any of them. That's a question I asked this morning. There is no replacement on it. It's an additional two. And again, it was, it's the reason for, my understanding is, the strategic placement for the future development into that area and into that zone.
But when we do divest of our trucks, are those donated, sold? Where do they go?
So I would probably defer back to administration, how this county handles it, but my previous experience is they go back to the surplus and they get either auction to try to get some funding back into the department, or if there is a need at a volunteer station and stuff like that, a deal is probably made to support that area. But I don't know.
Yeah, the problem is, is with the new tier program with the motors, they gotta leave the state, so they generally go to Mexico.
That's, yeah. We've done that.
So it's an airborne?
It's airborne. You guys caused the problem.
Yeah.
Any more questions? It's a forfeit vote. Supervisor moved by Supervisor Fagundes. Second. Second by Supervisor Navson Valley. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Joe Nevs.
Yes.
Richard Valley. Doug Verboon.
Yes.
Rusty Robinson.
Yes.
Richard Fagundes.
Yes. Okay, five in favor.
Good work.
So we'll be here in twenty-twenty-six, maybe twenty-seven. We'll have a new truck.
Hopefully.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
All right. So next item will be Human Resources, and we have Ashley. Good morning.
Chairman, Members of the Board, Ashley Hernandez, Personal Analyst. I'm here today to recommend that the board approve the new draft specification for the epidemiologist position and set the salary at range two thirty-seven point five, six thousand three hundred eighty-seven to seven thousand seven hundred ninety-five dollars monthly, and allocate one full-time equivalent position. The epidemiologist will be a new classification for the Public Health Department that will specialize in public health data analytics related to communicable disease and chronic disease impacting the county. The Public Health Department is currently utilizing a contracted professional service to perform these duties, and the current contract is set to expire on June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-four. And the Public Health Department would benefit from staffing a full-time epidemiologist and currently has funding available through the future of public health. The cost for the new position for the remainder of the fiscal year, twenty-three, twenty-four, is approximately fourteen thousand seven hundred forty dollars per salary only. The cost will be absorbed within the department's current budget through the future of public health funding, so there's no pact to the general pact. If you have any questions, I would have to answer them.
Thank you very much. Any question or comments? Move is presented, Mr. Chair. Moved by Supervisor Nev, second by Supervisor Robinson. Madam Clerk, please call roll.
Joe Nevs.
Yes.
Richard Valley.
Hi.
Doug Verboon.
Yes.
Rusty Robinson.
Yes.
Richard Fagundes.
Yes. Five in favor. Hey, next item is gonna be by Scott Howell, Veteran Services. Good morning.
Morning, Mr. Chairman, Members of the Board, Scott Hallwell, Kings County Veteran Services. I'm appearing before your board today to request the board to declare the week of March twenty-fourth through the thirtieth, two thousand twenty-four, as Veteran and Military Women's History Week in Kings County in order to honor all current women, military members, and veterans for their sacrifice and contributions to the United States Armed Forces and our community. and veterans for their sacrifice and contributions to the United States Armed Forces and our community. Kings County military women and veterans are part of a long and proud legacy of military service. And the fourth week of March is an important time to recognize their significant contributions to the U.S. Armed Forces and the local communities. Even before the enactment of the Women's Armed Forces or the Women's Armed Services Integration Act of nineteen eighty-four, women have consistently answered the call to service. Since the American Revolution and throughout each major U.S. conflict and during times of peace, women have always defended the freedoms and citizens of this nation. Female active-duty military and veterans in Kings County are diverse in character, integrity, resourcefulness, courage, and conviction. They are recognized leaders, steadfast volunteers, and devoted family members. It is the county's duty to recognize the contributions and sacrifices of all women who have served and continue to serve in the U.S. Armed Forces. And with that, we request the board adopt a resolution recognizing March twenty-fourth through the thirtieth, two thousand twenty-four, as Veteran and Military Women's History Week in Kings County. There is no fiscal impact and this resolution has been reviewed and approved by county council as to form. And I stand by for your questions.
Thank you. Moved by Supervisor Fagundis, second by Supervisor Valley. Did I comment?
Thanks, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Scott, for being here this morning. I just want to add as well, thank you to the county employees, the women, veterans that we have here at the county as well that that served in the military and you know, this proclamation is something we do every year. Appreciate you bringing that. And for just anyone who doesn't know, I mean, just much more than the proclamation is, I would hope people would come down to Corcoran and see the Five Pillars of Freedom where we purposefully, those five statues there, we purposefully, as you know, asked that two of those statues would be women.
Marine Corps and Navy.
And yes, and as a former Marine, asking that the Marine Corps statue be a woman because we, you know, we served with some tough Marines. We don't call them women Marines. We don't call them WMs. We call them Marines because they go through the same boot camp we did and they're in the same title we did. But especially for the young lady, if you haven't seen the Five Pillars of Freedom yet, go down there and you'll see those twelve-foot statues and the two women shining up there on those Five Pillars of Freedom. Okay? All right. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yes, it's extremely moving to go down there. When we celebrated the veteran's birthday here a couple of weeks ago with the veteran support group, I was talking to him afterwards and I presented him with one of the coins from the Five Pillars of Freedom and he was surprised he'd not been down there yet. And I said, well, I said, you know, grab one of these, you know, guys that you hang out with and have them take you down there. And he backed up and he looked at me and he said, well, I can drive myself down there. I got a van right out there on the curb. I'll take it. And I'll take you down there and show it to you.
Nice.
So he was gonna go down there and, you know, observe that and spend some time down there. And it was just surprising to me that somebody you know, been here in the county and served as he did and reached the age that he did and none of his compadres had skipped him up and taken.
Word is spreading, but that's something, you know, that we still have to follow up with, whether it be approaching the county, city of Corcoran, to do something along the lines of making sure that thing gets promoted. And then one of the things I'm learning too is if we get it in these state or national databases where a lot of these American legions or VFW posts, they go to, you know, when they're gonna do the rides on the bikes, they go to these databases and and they can find these memorials. But we definitely need to raise the profile. I know the hard part was getting it done and then the unveiling and then you kind of step back and deal with all the issues of the county as well. But yeah. We gotta sit down, man, get some heads together and raise the awareness of that.
Absolutely.
Memorial there. Yes, sir.
Yes, and one more comment to the ladies book at the Commerce Republic. Last year, we didn't wait for Military Week. We did it on our own. We had Women of History. We had all the women that flew over the Rose Bowl.
Super Bowl.
Super Bowl.
Yeah.
Yes, very cool.
Yes.
And then like, when a veteran, my great aunt was one of Rosie Riverer campaigns, she flew B-25s off the flight line, off the plane, yeah, so really cool.
No, that was a good day. That was a good day.
Okay, we have a post and a second. Madam Court, please call a roll.
Joe Nevs.
Yes.
Richard Valley.
Hi.
Doug Verboon.
Yes.
Rusty Robinson.
Yes.
Richard Fagundis.
Yes.
I have a favor. Thank you, Scott.
Thank you.
And I think I said Howell. I meant Howell. So sorry about that.
Close enough.
Okay, at this point, we'll go to board member announcements and reports. Supervisor Nev.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just want to acknowledge and thank everyone that participated in last week's Youth in Government Day. Staff department heads, Hanford Rotary. All it was, I think it was a great day to allow young people in and view local government. So I want to thank everyone that was involved with those activities of a week ago. And then had the ability to get back on the softball field, beautiful Lori Romero Gardner Field in Lemoore and announce the softball game. Then traveled to Fresno for Cal Viva Finance and Regional Board. The fiscal year budget was approved at one point eight billion dollars by the Finance Committee and will be sent to the full board for discussion and approval, hopefully. The Health Management Community Support Programs Quality Improvement and Healthcare Effectiveness Data was also reviewed and discussed. Total enrollment continues to remain at four hundred and thirty thousand five hundred people within the region. Kings County has thirty-eight thousand four hundred, Madera, forty-six thousand seven hundred and sixty. And Fresno County makes up the bulk of the enrollment with three hundred and forty-five thousand souls. Disenrollments that have been allowed since the end of the pandemic. We have about four more months left remaining for members to confirm their coverage under Cal Viva. And we have been so far very surprised and glad that some of the disenrollments have not left the program and so we continue to work through those events. Had the pleasure of going to the Hanford Chamber of Commerce Awards and Installation Dinner. Supervisor Verboon was there as well as I want to congratulate all of the award winners and the installation of the directors of the Hanford Chamber of Commerce. On Sunday, Kathy and I attended the Knights of Columbus Palm Sunday Breakfast held in the fraternal hall. Very nice event. It's been going on for many, many years. Yesterday, regular meeting of the Cal Auto Fingerprint Identification, Cal ID and the Remote Access Network Board ran, had their annual meeting. We reviewed the LifeScan machines, annual maintenance and the budgets. The agreements and budgets were all approved and coming to this board for formal adoption sometime in the future. Want to thank Kristen who helped out with the board support and Cassandra Baker, who presented the service agreements and the budgets to the board. And then also on yesterday, the Kings County Behavioral Health Advisory Board had a meeting at lunchtime reviewing the Mental Health Services, Student Services Act program, which is fairly new to the to the program and seems to be doing very well with four schools involved and four more getting ready to be added to the list. The Mental Health Services Act, community planning results were also presented and moving in the right direction. So we continue to improve that progress as well. And then we also received the ballot information that recently passed statewide and some of the CareCork progress as it moves towards coming online, hopefully in early two thousand twenty-five. So with that, thank you very much, Mr. Chair, and wish everybody a very happy Easter.
Thank you. Supervisor Fagundis.
Thank you. All I had this week was the Commission on Edging and on Thursday and Wednesday was KCAO. And then I attended the fish dinner they had in Lemoore on Friday. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Valley.
Anything, Mr. Chairman? Just real quick, also address some public comments on, I don't know what high school the young lady goes to, but I hope that word came to you that last week was an opportunity. We had our annual Youth in Government Day. So last week, this place was packed with high school students from all over the county. Five of them sat here with us. They were supervisors for a day. The rest went out with the department heads and went and job shadowed throughout the day. So if you didn't get word of that, we ought to make sure you're aware of that for this, that next year because you are active. This is not your first time here. It'd be great to have you up here on there, okay? And we can make that happen. And then also know that three or four times a year, how many city-county coordinating meetings we have, three or four?
We do them quarterly.
Quarterly. So every three months, board of supervisors, we have a five-thirty or six P.M. meeting with all the city councils in the county with us and it rotates from Avonale to Corcoran to Hanford, Lemoore. And I believe technically those are public meetings, although nobody comes to those, but technically I believe a public notice goes out on there. And then back in two thousand and nine, my first year, the board granted a request and we did evening meetings in Kettelman, Avonale, and Corcoran. Home Garden wasn't in my district at the time. There were six o'clock meetings and we actually had a good time. We got to eat dinner in all the cities, in and out and in Kettelman City. And then I never brought it back. So that's all me. But those are the kind of things that do take place out there. I just wanted to address it, give the information. Thanks for coming. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Lieutenant Robinson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Last week, I attended the San Joaquin Valley Air Pollution Control District meeting. Also met with Supervisor Verboon and Dave Valdeos, Field Rep on County Priorities and Water. Met with several downtown businesses in downtown Hanford on the homeless crisis. And then also spoke with Garrett Gilchrist, the Vice President of the Farm Bureau and Water.
Thank you very much. Not much more to add to that. Amtrak meeting on Friday. Discuss the new venture cars. Also, the third Friday in May, Amtrak San Joaquin Board Meeting will be in Hanford. So look forward to that. And I want to thank Supervisor Valley. His brother passed away and she was a cook when President Reagan came here to Kings County back in February ninety-eighty. He presented her with a pen and he just gave that to me to keep in my collection. So thank you.
There you go.
Appreciate it.
Yes, sir.
Okay, we'll go on now to closed session and litigation.
Mr. Chairman.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I could skip the report and just submit it.
You were so quiet. Upcoming events and board correspondence.
Thank you. Your board received correspondence for Kings County Operational Area Report from OES dated March eighteenth, two thousand twenty-four. For upcoming events, Kings County Behavioral Health will host their Veteran Support Group, their monthly meeting that they have March twenty-sixth from five-thirty to seven-thirty at the Veterans Memorial Hall in Hanford. Kings County Library, the Avonale Branch will host its movie time at the library March twenty-seventh, three to five. And the Kings County Library Hanford Branch will host its Sit and Stitch Group March twenty-seventh, two to five-thirty P.M. Kings County Behavioral Health will host their Family Member Support Group today. Sorry, April second from five-thirty to seven-thirty P.M. And the Kings County District Attorney's Office Victim Witness Assistance Program will host its annual quilt unveiling in support of National Crime Victims' Right Week on Tuesday, April twenty-third from six to seven-thirty P.M. For upcoming agenda items, we do have a few for April second. Administration has two, transition of the county of Kings domain from dot com to dot gov. This will be in conjunction with IT, approval of some issuances of bonds for some qualified residential rental projects. County Council has an item of the renewal of local emergency due to the local flood. Elections has two, the certified statement of votes for the March fifth and March nineteenth elections. Health has three items, a farm and ranch, solid waste cleanup and abatement program grant, and some technology consulting and National Public Health Week. Human Resources has a job spec for the homeless program coordinator. Human Services Agency hasn't adopted revisions to General Systems Program standards. Public Works has one item on the Houston Avenue Bridge replacement project, and that concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you. This time we'll move to closed session as outlined. See you next Tuesday.